7:30 ish. I shall call the meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners to order. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded at RMLD's office. 2:30 Ash Street, Reading, asks for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Lynnfield, as well as live stream on RCTV and YouTube. Our RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the chair and items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the chair, all persons addressed in the board will state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the chair to maintain order and not public comment or ensuing discussion. Are there any people available for a public comment? Okay. And Vice Chair Pissino will serve as the Board Secretary for this evening's meeting. Welcome Vivek Soni from the cab. Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Just then, our next meeting is going to be next week. It's going to be on the 23rd. And just one bit, so really, we don't have anything.
Okay.
Because we have, our last meeting was together.
And Liaisons, Karen Herrick from Select Board. Do you have any comments, Karen?
No, I'm excited. I'm testing out teams. Congratulations on getting the system working. I would say like the, it's not large enough for me to see what the, what your presentation looks like, but the camera looks good. I can see you. Congratulations.
We're testing out new technology.
Yeah, that's great.
No one can comment tonight. And so we're going to move on to approve the meeting minutes.
Yeah. First, I want Erica, it's kind of a different format. So Erica, you want to go over what changed? The minutes are in a little bit different format than you normally see them.
Okay. So I did some research on what other MLPs are doing for the minutes just to make things easier for people who want to look at them, et cetera. So the major changes that we have for these ones is instead of putting the acronyms within the minutes, I just listed them right up front so people know what things are. And then a link to the materials and packets for that meeting. So for example, all materials can be found on the website. So this will link to the agenda and packet for the September meeting. And then as we go through each presentation, it will be linked to that presentation within the document. So it will look like one PDF. And for example, 2022 NAPA Conference Report on the screen here, where it says, click here to view the 2022 presentation. It's going to link you within the PDF and it will jump right into that presentation. You're not reading the document. You're just able to reference things quickly and easily. And we can definitely tweak this as we go, but just a little change to start.
Then we're going to make a motion, Manager. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the open session meeting minutes of September 15, 2022. You've got to wait meeting in there second time, so take it out. On the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
We have a second.
Second.
And we're going to vote in the morning.
Yeah, Mr. Pissinaw.
Mr. Calvaro.
Mr. Goldrey.
We're laying a B to I. And let's just come back. Can I hold your card?
Yes.
I reckon.
You can move this.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Moved at bid 2023-02 for hourly rates for professional main power vehicles, trade tools and equipment for underground electrical distribution, construction and maintenance. They were the power line contractors presented in chapter 39M as the lowest responsible bidder on an estimated three-year total of $372,000. And I vote on the recommendation of the chairman.
Yes. We spent a bid for two, fifteen companies and only two responded. So what we did, this bid award was based on hourly rates for an estimated 350 hours of straight time and 50 hours of overtime per year. And these hours that you adjust for bid purposes only. So it's not representing the true hours that they're going to be working. So because this is chapter 30, 39M, that we have to award it to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So the lowest bidder was PLN Powerline Contractors, which basically didn't take any exceptions. And given the lowest bidder by $5,275. It's just $5,000. So that's what our recommendation is. Just to give you history, we sort of got data for past three years. We paid an average of $5,877 annually to the contractor which is departing now, which is McDonald Electric. As of next month, they're going to start, the new contract is going to start at this rate, the new rate. So that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one comment. Usually we, you know, I thought we talked about actually putting in what budget number is in this. I don't, I don't see it here. Usually you put in, you know, budget X amount. And I don't see it here. Put the write-up.
Yes.
So I mean, at this point, I have, you know, I don't have any problem with it. You know, I think maybe future, you sure. Put the, put the budget amount. Have a separate line of the budget amount.
Perfect.
Yes, you are. Okay.
Can we get a second order of motion before?
Just another question. Dave's second. How long was McDonald's contract previously? Was it a three-year term or?
Three-year term, yes.
So.
This is also three-year.
Okay. And so they only had, held it for three years. And now it's another contractor.
Every three years, we go up to bid. We, there's 15 companies, 15, 17 companies. They invite them all, we send them out.
Yeah.
Depending on how busy they are, what they can, they have to.
Is it, is there any appetite to extend the contract to a five-year contract? Just, I'll give you something.
I think the limit on that one, I believe, but I can, I can check and get back to you on that. I believe it's only two years is the max.
In terms of the.
In terms of the.
We'll check the, yeah. Your concept is.
Yeah. Well, it was continuity, right? I will tell you, a three-year contract is very, it's quick. And so it's, it's a very quick contract. But as soon as you develop continuity with format improvement.
They have good parts.
It's, it's, it's the part. And it's very, very difficult. You know that.
Regroup.
Engineering, designing, transitioning, you have guys there, guys. But we get along the contract.
It would be good. I'm going to check on that.
Okay.
And get back.
That's not.
I, that's actually my. Generally, for the other bids, that's what we're trying to do. And that's what we, for the switches, pathways, switching, skates, and motors. All of it, cap, cap rings, the other things. The neighbor, yeah.
Any other discussion, Bob?
Oh, second.
Did you both confuse?
No.
You seconded the other.
I seconded the minutes.
Right.
Okay, so Bob seconded the big, Dave seconded the minst.
Are you ready?
Mr. Pissinaw.
Calvaro.
Goldrey.
We're laying a B to I.
Thank you.
Oh, policy 11, code of conduct. Presented by Grayfolds.
Okay. We made the motion. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve policy 11, code of conduct revision zero, as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager. Clear the contract.
Give a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Good second.
Second.
Great. Originally, this was called the code of conduct. We spent some time looking at how other companies do this. Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct. Now, people have 20 or 30-page books and presentations. The intention for us was to simplify it so that our team, the members of the RMLD team, would actually read it and more importantly, apply it. The emphasis, as you probably noticed, was on serving. Right? You know, we are a public utility. We're here to serve our ratepayers. That's why we actually changed the title to Serving with Excellence. There are a couple of key things, themes that we have in here. You'll see, we spent a lot of time trying to work on the words, et cetera. As you guys know, that if you want to make something shorter and more crisp, it takes more effort. I would have written a shorter letter if I had more time. You've heard that expression. But the key things in here are safety, teamwork, personal responsibility, serving, as we talked about it, and also, you know, contributing, right? We talked in here about bring your A-game, best attitude, best abilities, et cetera. So there's a lot of pieces in here. The intention was to keep it short and sweet, to basically set an expectation, not be prescriptive in terms of step one, step two, step three, step four. And also to, you know, we took out the, if you don't do this, here's the consequences. We're trying to, we're trying to set a, I don't say set a standard, but set a, set of expectations and keep it short and sweet so people will actually remember and look at it. Tonight, any input tonight would be good, but I think the expectation that Madam Chair and I talked about before is, is to kind of give you guys a little background on it, the intention behind it, on my request. And then if you guys have a chance to take a look at it over the course of, before our next meeting, any inputs, just send it back, either going to bring it to the next meeting, but ideally, if you could just email back me directly, not to the group, but me directly, or call me, or meet with me, if you guys, so we, it's easier for us to communicate. That would be very helpful. What I would ask you to do is focus primarily on tone and content from the perspective of, are there things either missing or things that you don't think we should be in there? What I'm not really asking for, I'll take input, but I'm not asking for wordsmithing. I'm asking for big picture pieces. Because as you guys know, when you start making something so tight, we've played around with a lot of words, a lot of different words. So that's the request that I have to you guys as the commissioners, and that's the sequence and schedule. Any initial reactions or initial comments or initial thoughts on the Serving with Excellence policy number? Please.
Unenforceable policy.
Unenforceable.
So it's a, it's a, you're asking someone how.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that, that's, that's more of a, I would almost say, admission statement than a policy. And that's, and that's my, my initial reaction to it, right? And I, and, and I like the idea.
Yeah.
But I wrapped up into a policy that's.
I may would call something different.
Something different, right. I, I, and I just see, and as, and I went back, I said, I went looking for policy and left. And I goes, there isn't. So I, I, good, good spot. I said, oh, okay. But I just thought, something, it's something different. I, I like the idea of it and I, I, I like to put people to contribute. Want to be a team player, but I just think, as, I'm fitting it in, but I just don't know where. That's why.
I think we talked about this, and it's really a code of conduct pledge.
Yeah.
Not enforceable. It's just to have the conversation upfront and remind employees occasionally.
This is what we're trying to do.
Remember, this is what we, we, we started and.
Yeah. So we're striving. This is our expectation in terms of being a member of the team. And it is radically different. And we, it looks nothing like any of the other policies, obviously.
No, no. I, I, you know, what is it, then, you know, is it, is it, do you, do you put it into a code of conduct? Or do you, but again, it's very difficult.
Yeah. And so we're actually going to go back and look at, you know, when we're talking about policies, because we have almost three dozen policies.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, we're going to streamline that as well. This is kind of the first attempt. But I think, I think, so, so take a look at the content in between now and then. The feedback's good, but I think what you're suggesting is maybe it doesn't belong in the policy category. So take a look at this. Maybe it's a better, I don't know. I won't, I won't call it admission statement because it's not.
Yeah, I, I just.
But, but no, but that's, yeah, but the, I think the, the feedback is good in terms of, it might have a different place. And I might, I'll take a look at that in terms of what else would be a good place. We were focusing more on, on the content itself. And we, this has been through, not dozens of drafts, but first cut was three pages long.
Yeah.
Do this, do that. It's like, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
So we're not going to vote today then?
No, the intention, the intention is that it's just initial feedback, initial tone, you know, comments.
Madam Chair, I will give the second order of agreement on the trial motion.
Yeah. Yeah, we, sorry, that was. That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. And then, yeah, just please, any other feedback? One, two.
So moving along to an approval for the Director of Energy Liaison.
Yes.
Consideration that Grayfolds will.
Great. So the, so obviously, we as RMLD, as an equity holder, we have a seat on the Board of Directors at E&amp;E. You guys have asked me as a General Manager to hold that seat. You do that. But we also have three, so E&amp;E has three external directors and they serve a three-year term. And so one of the original founding members of the E&amp;E Board of Directors has retired as of last December. And so the recommendation is to, we, we, the support that they, the recommendation of E&amp;E is to put Paul Hiller, Timmerd, to be the, one of the three external individuals. You guys probably don't remember because we didn't have him present, but two years ago, when we were walking through all of the policy theory discussions, he had done some work for us, some, some background educational work that ended up in slides, et cetera. He didn't do an actual presentation like the, like the other group had done. As of, anyway, so he's very experienced. He does a tremendous amount of work for the state. He does a tremendous amount of work for Iceland, New England. So he is deeply experienced in terms of power, energy from a public perspective. He would be a great addition to the E&amp;E Board member. So anyways, that's, you guys had a chance, I don't know if Mark threw his bio, but the bio was in there. It should have been the package, right? The bio in the package. Yeah, good, good, great. So, yeah. He runs the analysis group. But he's.
Sorry, not in the package?
Oh, we didn't email it. Oh, okay.
Well, we have it.
Well, I'll just read the first part. I mean, so he basically founded the analysis group, right? He was chairman of the Massachusetts DPU for a period of time. He, you know, again, I think, you know, his expertise is in modeling, economics, public power, public policy relative to energy. I mean, he was a very talented individual. He actually, at the Portland, presented at the Portland NAPA Annual Meeting, he did a presentation on carbon credits. So again, he's, he's known in the industry very well. I'm sorry that this package didn't get in front of you guys. I think, you know, probably what's the other, scroll down a little bit in terms of the other key things. Yeah, well, CV's 27 pages, so, yeah. It's, it's a long CV. It's a legit, it's a CV. Right, this is close to a resume. He's got a master's in energy and resources from University of California, Berkeley. He's got a BS in physics from the University of Massachusetts, Amherst. I mean, it's. I would love to have on a board of directors. You know, or, I mean, you know, on the, on the Board of Directors. So he, he's a very thoughtful individual that does the, does the hard work of the modeling. He's got a really good team that works with him. Obviously, from a E&amp;E Board of Directors position, he would just be him, but he knows the space intimately well and I think he'd be very helpful for us as equity holders of E&amp;E. So I might apologize if we did a more detailed package, but.
Have the other municipalities voted?
I think they're all in different, I think they are. So I don't know. I know they're all trying to get that done this month so that we can, March can officially bring them onboard. But each of the, each, you know, Concord and Wellesley and Ingham and Braintree, Anton, those are all, and us are the equity holders. So I expect all of them to support. I wouldn't be surprised if nobody did. So I don't know for a fact, but he's, he's not, we'll be lucky to have him.
Vivek?
Yeah, just a question. Who is he replacing? Because I'm looking at the Board Directors and there's still still calling another board there. So I'm just curious, who is he replacing?
Do you have the other, so I am also, who are the other names you have on there?
I guess it's not, yeah, it'll be, is it Raymond Salaby?
No.
Christians Corsey?
No, Christians, an external guy.
Thomas Whitney?
Yeah, Whitney. Tom, I think.
Okay, Thomas.
Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's, he looked back to the game of E&amp;E. Tom was actually a Bayback executive way back then. And it was very influential in terms of energy. He's not, he's not, he's not an energy guy, specifically the finance guy. Tom. He is, he's retired from everything at this point. This was the last thing he joined. But Paul.
John, sorry, our innovation.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was Tom. So, you know, basically, Paul's done work for Wellesley. He's done work for Meme over the past several years. Sales studies for Iceland, New England, which I already mentioned, and the other regional NGOs. He's been involved in E&amp;E strategy planning at different projects over the past several years. Literally, this guy is expert in our area. I think he's very talented. And he's done work for us at RMLD.
Yeah. Just one question. The process is, we, we as the board have to recommend that we elect this guy? Or is that the correct term? Will we recommend he be accepted or what?
Yeah, you need to, well, basically, you need to approve RMLD's vote to have him be part of the board. But you guys, so as opposed to the General, like, we, I represent RMLD, but in this case, the way the, the structure at E&amp;E is, you as the commissioners need to confirm Board Directors, the external Board Directors. Well, for that matter, you also confirm.
You're going to vote on the final to let him in or what?
Yeah, I'll end up voting on behalf of you. Well, I'll, you know, with your approval, of course.
Bring up the motion.
Okay.
Let me just change, move that the RMLD Board of Directors, and take up the word here, Bob. Direct the General Manager to vote to elect Paul. I'm going to change it to. That's right. Okay? So I'll read the whole motion. You got it, Erica? We're good?
Yeah, if you want to read it.
Move the Board of Directors, direct the General Manager to vote to elect Paul Hibbert as Director of the Northern, Energy New England Board to serve in its capacity as, for a term as defined in section 3.2 of the Energy New England Operating Agreement.
Second. Do you need further discussion?
Mr. Pissino?
Mr. Pissino? Calvaro. Goldrey.
IRD.
Great. So I'm going to first introduce, I'm going to present this, these few notes for the IRD report tonight. But I'm going to do that first by introducing Bill. Bill is the new director as of Monday, so he's joining our, our team. He is the new director of IRD. We are excited to have him onboard. We'll do a release tomorrow, but he brings 25 years, over 25 years of experience in energy space. I think most recently was at Enwick. At Enwick, he had the opportunity to lead the development of a Nexus Zero program, which is focused on energy efficiency and decarbonization, so things that are directly up our alley. He also led a project for grid-scale batteries, 80 megawatts, across a handful of other MLPs. So he's, he's done quite a bit of work in his tenure at Enwick. Before that, he was at EverSource, again, energy efficiency programs. Going further back, he has actually led small companies, so he's got a lot of leadership experience as well. And so we are excited to have him. I'm personally excited to have him onboard for the meeting. So, so I'm, I'm going to pass the baton to him after we go through this. So I think the next IRD report, which will be next month or the month after, we've got, we'll, you'll hear some of the things that we'll be talking about. Should actually should say that we've got a few things that we'll need to talk about next month. So Bill will be leading that discussion next month. So first order of business, let's just introduce Bill. So welcome, Bill.
Thank you. So there are a couple of quick topics. So hedging. So as you guys know, from our discussions on rates, et cetera, our power supply portfolio is in good shape. But, you know, we, it requires constant care and feeding. I say this with, with passion, you guys know that. The, we think there's an opportunity right now, given the external marketplace. Again, this is, our, our energy market in New England is affected by global events. And we've talked about several of them. That chart on the left is, was known as around-the-clock pricing. That's open market pricing. On the left-hand side, I know it's very small print, but it basically is early, on the left-hand side is January of 2022, before any global events in Europe. And then the far right-hand side is the first week of February of 2023. So as you can see, and each one of those colored lines are different years. The, the highest one is, was 2023, and then the red, 2024, et cetera. Normally, they go the other way around, but, but the external markets push the near-term prices up. In the middle of 2022, the open market opportunities that we would normally pursue were extremely expensive. You can see how, how high they were in the chart relative to the left-hand side or the right-hand side. And given that the right-hand side is back down to a more normal level, we're, we're aggressively looking at bringing our hedge position from 80%, 85% up to 90%. So you can see on that far right-hand column, 23 is 85, 24 is 85, a couple of percentages, roughly 85, 25, 26, 27, 82 down to 80. Still a good position to be in, but we're, we're looking at, we think it's going to be prudent. So I'm not asking for any, any decisions right now. And if we were to do something, we would probably do it under the TFA. As you guys know, we haven't done any TFA transactions in over 18 months. The numbers, which have just been too high, but they're back, back down. So we're, we're running some analysis. There is a high probability that we will, that we will look at moving the hedge position up closer to 90% maybe in the month of March. So just kind of a heads up, there's a lot of reasons of, of why the forward price curve is down versus 2022 or mid-2022. We've talked about most of them. The general consensus, and we, we take, we do a lot of our own research, but we get a lot of input from the open market position as well as E&amp;E. The perception is, we're not quite at the bottom of where the market might be and nobody knows for sure. But we're, we're closer to the bottom than we are to any peaks. And that's certainly true over the, over the past. So that's, that's what we're looking at doing. So it's kind of an update for you guys. Any questions on power supply, hedging? No major changes right now, but just, we think there's an opportunity here to take some risk off the table. Thoughts, actions?
Vivek?
Is it not gas prices basically being low that's really?
Yeah, natural gas, so natural gas is the key driver right now and not just natural. So as you, as you really talked about before, our natural gas prices are, are influenced by what happens in New York, directly and indirectly. We aren't gas constrained. But yeah, we're down, the gas prices right now are sub $3.90 to you. And if you remember, you know, last summer, they were at the $9. And they're at the state, pretty much a $7 range from the 90 to you. That directly impacts open markets.
You gotta get gas from national grid, so.
Well, the good news is.
They have a gun to go down. They were, they were this close to actually redoing the rates in the state when it said no.
No. Wow.
Yeah.
So that's fascinating.
They, they said just ride, ride it up right now and then when the, when the time, when the time is appropriate.
Which will be, you know, four, four months from now.
That's correct.
Four, five months from now.
They just said, that's the better, better time to do it, just, just in case I'm absent, they just, it's too.
It's still, while it's, it's February, it's still winter. And, you know, and we, when anything could happen, so it's probably prudent advice.
Looks like Karen might have a comment.
Karen, yeah.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, since I'm a little remote, I just wanted to be clear. Bob, you were speaking about, because I have been watching gas prices come down. So were you saying that National Grid is going to hold off reducing rates and just make sure they're down permanently? And, and you're going to, Greg, you'll follow along accordingly? Is that what we're saying?
Well, that's two different points.
Two different, yeah.
Yeah.
Two different things.
So, but, but just repeat your point and repeat your point.
So there was, there was, I know there was discussion with National Grid, with the state to be proactive and change rates.
For gas or electric or what?
Well, change rate because the energy costs had gone down.
Yeah.
But the decision was that is not going to occur. There was discussion about it because as, as we had discussion about rates and energy costs, and they were extremely high, and then they stopped, go down. The same discussions occurred across the industry.
Exactly.
But there was no, no, no change of going to occur.
No, no, Karen, the comment that I was making relative to the RMLD portfolio is, given that the external context of natural gas prices, which affect electricity prices, are lower right now, and they're expected, there's a slight downward trend over the next month and a half or so, while we're still in winter months. We are looking actively to see if we will move our open position, which currently is about 85%, up to 90%. And the reason to do that is, as we go further out, the expectation, particularly after 2025, is that there'll be increasing upward pressure on energy prices. So the opportunity here is maybe to lock in a larger piece of our portfolio, not for 20 years out, but for somewhere between three and four years, move our 80 to 85% up to 90%. That's the analysis that we're doing. And it is, it is, you know, I won't call it opportunistic, but it's, you know, you got to watch the market carefully, and we're at a dip. It looks like we're at a dip in the prices over the next month and a half or so. And again, you know, nobody can predict exactly, but that's what it looks like. So we're, the point being is that we are, we are actively, but we're always actively, but we are, we're, we're, we're looking to pull the trigger potentially here in the next six weeks or so.
Okay, thank you for that. I, that, you know, that makes a lot of sense. And, and I know you are, you do have the luxury of contracting, contracting for longer terms than National Grid. So, and, but I was, I was just already thinking about the ratepayers. Because we did do a survey on the town side, and folks are struggling from inflation and specifically mentioned electric rates. So what I was just wondering if, if, as, if we could look forward to, steel prices are down to 220 prices, and now I'm seeing gas prices are down to some, sometime in 2021, which is awesome. So at some point, could the ratepayers also expect to see a bit of a rollback in those recent increases?
Let me state this, Karen. So on, on the power supply part of our bill, it is passed through. And so what we, what we actually incur, again, where 85% of it is contracted and known, and the other 15% is open. The good news, that 15% open, there is, there is a continual downward pressure on that. And all those, all those downward pressures pass directly to the ratepayers. So while we will implement the rate increase that we had approved back in January, it will probably be even lower than we had forecasted back in January. It won't be zero, but it might be 7%. Like, we often finalize the numbers, I mean, it's, when I say finalize the numbers, we, we do adjustments to energy and NIPA, which is a credit, as well as PPCT, which is capacity and transmission. So we do that each month. We'll run those analysis again next week in preparation for the March bills. But I'm expecting that the March bill will be lower than we had even thought back in January. To reflect the fact that the wholesale part of our portfolio is going down. So net-net, yeah, it'll be less expensive than even we had anticipated, which is good news.
Yeah, it's great news. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Yep, very good. All right, the other topic, as you know, two years ago, we had talked about Palmer. Palmer was a, a generation plant that was in the works to be commissioned originally by the end of March 2022. There was an extension to March 31st of 2023, that's right around the corner. There are a variety of MLPs that were part of that contract. Our intention, just to, so our understanding right now is no construction's been done on that property, but just to make sure that we cross all the, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, we will issue a termination, a formal termination letter for the contract in the window that is provided in the contract. So we are highly attentive. All said and done, we've made other provisions for power in lieu of that. So it's kind of a non-entity rest, but we're going to make sure we check the final boxes of Palmer. So that's, so everybody knows.
I, I was at a woodchip facility the other day, just, just to let you know.
Just, yeah.
It was like a biofuel, type of biofuel.
Yep.
Still there. Was there any final costs associated with the termination contracts?
Not for us.
Okay.
No, there won't be any additional fees for us to terminate the contract. All right, now we're talking about rates. So, you know, with the, with the, you know, so what we're doing in RMLD right now in this context, and we've talked about time-of-use rates going forward. Part of the prerequisite is to increase the amount of time-of-use meters that we have. We're in the process of, the RFP has been issued for the MDM system, which is the software piece to analyze the data, and we can use that with our existing AMI systems. And then we're finishing up the specifications for the AMI system that we'll send out in several weeks as well. I'm laying out these two. One is the EV1 rate we've talked about before, but the other one is the coincidence. So this slide four, the coincident industrial peak rate. We've talked about this a little bit, but I want to put a little more detail behind it, because we're really trying to, trying to fine-tune it. But I wanted to give you guys an idea of what it looks like. I think over the past couple of years, it's been helpful to give you guys an idea of what we're trying to do, what you're thinking about. So when it gets time to put stuff in place, it's not like, hey, here it is, you got two seconds to think about it. So this is a little bit of background for you right now. As you guys know, our capacity and transmission costs are driven by either monthly peaks in the case of transmission, or annual peaks in the, in the case of capacity. And the rates are set external to us for transmission and capacity. But the way we can control how much we pay is what our load is during those peaks, during the monthly peaks, and during transmission, and during the annual peaks for capacity. So what we've had in place is a shred-the-peak program. We also have our battery system in place. We'll talk about that in a few minutes, a little more detail of our battery. And we also have our 2.5-megawatt gen system that's been in place for, since 2017. So all of those factors, the intention line, all of those is to reduce our load during that peak hour. So the shred-the-peak program has not had a lot of, over the past couple of years, a lot of participation, especially by the industrials. As you guys remember, the industrials represent a pretty significant part of our, of our load in terms of megawatts, as opposed to megawatts. So we want to figure out a way to get them more engaged, more involved. One of the things is currently what we do with our I-rate, the industrial rate, is we charge them, a demand charge based on their maximum peak. And what we are suggesting, what we're looking at doing is have their demand charge be tied to our peak, our monthly peak or our, our annual capacity peak. So we're trying to align our, have our customers align with us at our direct cost. There was a reason historically why it was their peak, and it was intended to basically cover, whatever their maximum peak was over the course of the month. It was intended basically to cover the cost of our distribution system. But over, over many decades, you know, many years, several decades, the, the power supply cost, as you guys know, is now the biggest part of our cost structure, not the distribution network. So we're going to base, so what we're trying to do basically is realign. And that chart that I have on the right there, the, the idea, right now, in that orange line, that, that, these are, these are an example, it's real data, but it's an example. So in that particular case, across, across the bottom, basically, is midnight on the left-hand side, noon in the middle, and then midnight on the right-hand side. So that's, that's a 24-hour load curve. On the left-hand side is demand in terms of kilowatts in this case, but megawatts, kilowatts, but it's a demand snapshot. But you can see in that orange, it says demand peak for the I-rate. There's a, there's a little peak right underneath the word coincident. And so that's what, that little snapshot is what we would charge them. We basically would take that peak and then multiply it by a demand charge, and that would be their rate, that would be their cost for the month. What we're, and if you look at that blue line, again, it's, the blue line's going to be much higher, but just so they're superimposed, again, for this example. But the RMLD peak is to the right-hand side there, right underneath the word RMLD, that would be the RMLD peak. And so the thought process would be to have the demand charge for the larger industrials, probably the top 15, maybe 30. We have to run some more analysis on that. But basically, to charge them the demand, which is that where you see the coincident peak on the right-hand side, actually, I probably pointed it in, but anyways, you guys can see on the right-hand side, the RMLD, there's that vertical line between the gray line and the orange line. If we are successful with the program, and other, well, at least one other MLP has been successful with this concept, we're going to take the lessons that they learned. But if they, basically, we have them drop their load during the same peak hours as us, then, then it directly aligns to helping us redo our capacity peak and our transmission peak. It basically aligns us. Now, there's a lot of things we need to do to make that happen. But the key thing is, is direct feedback to the customer. Like, they'll see in the following month, well, second month bill, but they'll see within two months, possibly three, depending upon what month it is. And if it's within two and three months, they'll directly see what they did prior, as opposed to wait for us to run some unusual calculations 12 months later. Oh, cool, very good, thank you. So there's, there's a more direct relationship. If they don't do anything, there's no penalty, but we're trying to create incentive for them to take action. Now, there's other things that we'll do, all of them, you know, we put in place, I think, what, four years ago, five years ago, but, no, actually, 2015.
2015.
Yeah, Tangent Amp is the platform. So most of these customers have a portal that gives them the peaks, et cetera. They don't use it very much right now. There's a bit of work for us to do to educate them to do it. There's no net loss for us, but there's a benefit if they actually participate at the right time. So there's more detail, we're going to do a more formal presentation to you guys in April. But this is a, this is that coincident peak for the industrials that we've been talking about. I want to give you ideas of what that really meant and what we're trying to do. So that's, that's coming. So that's, any questions on the coincident peak? And Mark, we're going to start with industrials first, and then maybe we'll, although eventually we go to all-time of use, it'll apply to everybody.
Do you need them to buy in? I'm looking at the chart, and they would already tell you, what, why do I even need to participate? Does it meant to tail in? I'm going down, or you're going up. Why would I, what's my incentive to tie in to, to this program and help a residential rate? And it'd be the first.
No, not residential, it'd be.
Well, the, the peak, right? Except that's residential rate, I kind of spoke to it. But that peak, you just have to look at it, like, I'm, I'm already tailing up. Why, I, why is my concern about that?
Because, yeah, because it, it'll directly affect their next month's bill. Like, if, so, they're paying a demand charge already. So you guys don't know, so, you know, a good chunk of their bill, about 35, I'd have to look at each, each one individually, which we did before, but roughly 35% of their bill is a demand charge. And if they can drop a megawatt, for example, you know, that number, depending on each one, but it could be significant dollars, you know. 10, 12, 13% of their bill could go down the following month. And for those that care about it, again, we're trying to create incentive, you're right. But right now, it just tables my peak. And some of the customers are actually work hard to chase, you know, to drive their demand charge down. Other ones, they don't care. We're trying to, try to write, again, a different program, just create some new interest and excitement, so that it's something that they can do. And it's also going to be simpler for us to administer the program, because it just flows right through our standard bill system. There's no extra, there's no extra work for, for us to actually make this network precise communication. Good.
So, right now, the demand, that demand rate is based on their peak.
Their peak, for the whole month.
Yeah, so would you keep the dollars the same?
That's the intention.
Right, so you keep the dollars the same and effectively change the rate, so they would be charged at a higher rate?
Well, it depends, you have to run the math.
Right, but, but the idea is it's revenue neutral, or at least it's cost neutral to them right now.
At the bus point, if they don't do anything, it's, it's revenue neutral to us. But the idea is to create an incentive, and so the dollars, the dollars that they would save are the dollars that you would save directly, literally one to one. So that's what I'm trying to align it. That's, but you're exactly right, that's the intention. So the math, that's why I have to do a little more work. The math has to be basically revenue neutral, in terms of where they are right now. And then encourage them to say, hey, look, you guys can save money every month if you take action. And literally every month. So, you know, yeah, so that's the intention.
Does it apply only to the monthly and annual peak, or just that bracket of time every day?
Just, so this would be just a piece. Yeah, I think, so I think what you're going to say is, hey, this, you know, this is just a financial play in terms of cashing transmission. There's a whole nother discussion that, that you're not talked about in terms of how we do this on a daily basis. But this right now is just peak, and just industrials, where there's big leverage. And if we can make the work here, I mean, every, every customer's got a different personality. Some people don't care, and some people are, you know, some industrials can make a difference, they can do something, and some of them can't. But here, now that, we're putting the control in their hands. All right, any other questions? We're going to propose a formal rate in April, and then we probably, we want to get it in place before the summer. So we want to do a bit of fanfare in terms of communication. So if we do it, it'll probably be effective, not if, our intention is to try and get it in place by June 1st, so that it's in place for July, August, and there'll be a bit of, there'll be, be a lot of communication with the industrials.
Give me estimate of the magnitude of the potential peak savings from this.
Just rough estimate, maybe two megawatts. But that's a couple hundred thousand dollars, so it's true.
It's half of the low-fitting battery.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, which is good.
Do you think that this, I think you could get a one-month rate when you introduce it, it's going to happen. But then the next one, you're not going to go down a megawatt, and the next one, it's going to be a megawatt.
No, 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 yeah, it won't, it won't ratchet you down, right.
So no, no, you're going to, you're going to hit it once, and then.
Well, or they drop it, if they don't do anything, then they'll pop back up to their old.
You just, you, you're going to, well, I just think you, you're going to flatten the curve once, but then you can't perpetually.
Growth.
Yeah, you know, so it's, I think, it's a, it's a one.
It's a step, it's a step function, not a, not a slow.
So timing-wise, it's like, yeah, like you said, do it, do it in the summer.
If we can get July August.
Yeah, July August, and then, and then, okay, don't do, don't do it again till the next year. I mean, there's nothing you could do like that.
Well, so, so there, there's always a benefit, it was the intention behind it, if we set it up, oh, yeah. If we set it up right, but the intention in terms of how we set it up is that if they don't do anything, they're paying what they've, they've been paying all along. If they take action, they're saving, every time they do something, they're saving. So it won't ratchet down each time, it doesn't reset their, it doesn't reset their basis, right? Doesn't keep ratcheting that down. The basis is still where it was historically. And if they save, great, if they do something, great, in the following month, they don't do it, then they're back up to where they were. Then two months later, if they do it, then they're back down. But the key thing for us, so we want them to take action, but we're trying to make a mechanism where what they do is directly attributable to our costs, our RMLD. We're trying to, that's why the line is there, we're trying to align their load with our load. That's the key piece, sorry?
No, just, but that savings is not just a one, every month they want to do it, right?
Every month they do it. If they don't do it, then there's no savings for them, and then there's no savings for us. But if they do do it, every month they have a new, every month it's a new chance to do it. I think what Bob's trying to say is, it's not like it ratches down, then ratches down again. It's, it's up here, and they ratchet.
Keep trying every month to save them.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, their, their normal, the normal load curve will be more like the orange curve. And if they, if they're successful, then they'll be down to the gray line. And then, you know, the next day, or for that matter, the next month. But if you point out, we ultimately want to try and get this to the end. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is get to what we call the unity load curve, where the, where the load curve for us is flat. And now we've optimized, now we'll never get there, but that's the, that's the ultimate goal, if we can.
If this works as you predict for the I-rate and for China, the.
Yeah, we'll spend, then we'll work deeper and deeper into, ultimately, you know, ultimately where it would go if we have everybody on time of use, there's, there'll be some version of this that all customers, including residential, will play. But that's, it's a little bit for the.
That's at least six months.
Yes, that's a 24, earliest would be a 2024, but, yeah, yeah, it's not six months, yeah, exactly right.
So to, to, to get them excited about this, would you use like a summer month profile to show that the summer month is what it is?
We'll take each one of their, we'll take their exact profile, because we have it.
Yeah, you can take it for, yeah, you can take their worst-case scenario, so you can tell them.
Yeah, well, well, so what typically is done with energy is, you're going to take the last three years, we'll take the last three years of July, August, or June, July.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so take, take the months that matter the most.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take summer months, because that's, because we've done all sorts of analysis, and we're going to get it. The summer months are the high months on the, on the industrials. They're even higher on the residential, which is back to, you know, 2024, 2025, we're within that range, somewhere in there. But when everybody participates, the big, you remember that? The big leverage will be on the residential. But that's, we're going to, we're, we'll, let's get, let's get the pieces worked out first, and then we'll get to the residential.
Heat.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a, residential's a 40% of our loads, we get them, and the industrials are 30% of our loads. This is a good place to start. Okay, EV1 rate. So we were talking about EV1 rate before, I'm just going to hit a couple of the key pieces. We had some, you know, you know, issues associated with, you know, one meter versus two meters, you know, do we have enough meters, et cetera, et cetera. So while we're not trying to make it fit every EV charger, we said, let's at least get it started, we'll do residential only. The intention behind here is twofold, right? The intention is to encourage people. The intention is to encourage people that are considering, you know, that are in the process of buying a new car, to consider buying electric, right? So, there's additional savings in terms of net cost of electricity versus fuel. And then the second element, which is equally important, is to, is to shape or encourage their behavior to charge at night. Hopefully, they'll normally charge at night anyway, because it's convenient to charge at night. But, um, but we wanna reinforce that. So, we had talked before about, um, so there's two, there's two big parts of the equation. One is, um, what are the windows? I wanna say windows, so we had originally talked a year and a half ago about, um, three eight-hour periods, because it's easy to remember. But the middle, the afternoon eight-hour period just seemed too long, yeah, I agree with you. So, we, we basically said two tens and a four. So, the four, which is the peak one, is between four and eight P M. And that, that corresponds to not only where our peaks are right now, but where the peaks are headed. So, um, if we were to go back fifteen years, our peaks at our M L D would be four or five in the afternoon. Now, they're five to six, sometimes seven. So, we're trying to stay in that range, um, for the high peak, um, the expensive peak for us, which means expensive peak for our customers, between four and eight. And then the other ones, just for simplicity, uh, we took the other twenty hours and split it into two ten-hour blocks. So, it's eight P M to six A M, and six A M to four P M. Um, and they have different rates, but we're sub ten cents overnight, highly discounted, still making money, which still covers our cost. And then very expensive, um, between four and eight in the afternoon, if you, if you sign up for this rate. Net-net, um, if eighty percent of the charge is the overnight, um, the rate would be about thirteen cents, which is about twenty-eight cents less than our twenty-twenty-three, um, this includes twenty-twenty-three rates, than our, our typical, um, residential rate for electric vehicles. So, there's incentive to do it. You know, I expect if, when we release this, um, and we'll do a motion, um, on the, on the March meeting, um, but if we do this, you know, we'll probably have less than fifty people, maybe three doesn't do it. So, it's gonna be small. But just, and the reason we're doing it is, we're, we're trying to get some experience, right? We're trying to see, you know, what, what do people do, and, and the people that are gonna do this are gonna be kind of the early adopters, they're gonna be the ones that wanna play, and we'll get feedback coming as well. So, that's the intention behind it, that's the structure. It's not radically different from what we've talked about before, we just fine-tuned it and said, hey, look, let's just make it residential initiative, because when we do the public chargers, it becomes a little bit more involved, particularly in the DC fast chargers.
Is it called the tablet rate?
No, we haven't really, okay, EV one rate. Next slide, please. So, so the, yeah, so.
Separate meter?
Yeah, separate meter. I mean.
Definitely a, a, a niche customer.
It's very discussed versus.
So, it's very.
So, we'll, yeah, if you want to put your house on it, you can, but you'll end up spending more money.
Yeah.
And we'll, and we'll make sure that people understand that.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what's gonna happen, they're gonna say, I've got the low one, I put my meter on this rate, I'm gonna wire everything to this.
Yeah.
Break them out.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna play that way. Yeah, go ahead.
I do have, and this Bob's joke is, is appropriate, because, so you're envisioning creating a super-low overnight, a new time of use rate? With the super-low overnight, right? So, we already have one. We already have a time of use.
We have eight time, yeah, no, right, we have an A two rate, which is a time of use rate.
Right, so there is a rate that residents can use right now.
Yeah.
That has lower rates from evening through until the next day at noon, then we get.
Yeah, that's true.
That I have that rate.
You do.
Now.
I have that for sure, but yes, I.
Well, I do, I do have it. So, to Bob's point, like, if you, the fact that that rate is there, that's the rate anybody who buys an EV is gonna wanna use. You already have a rate that they.
Well, actually, if they do the charger, we actually, that's a requirement to go to that rate, that's true.
Okay, so, by creating yet another one, all you're doing is, you're gonna make it even cheaper for people like me, because they're gonna switch to the even better time of use rate, and you just lost revenue from me by, in, by adopting the tablet rate. Because I, I will, I will switch to that.
There's so few of them.
No, 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 there's a lot.
There'll be a lot of them.
There's a lot of cars coming in now, they're all gonna choose this even cheaper overnight rate. You're gonna lose revenue, and I feel like you should impose one time-based ratio followed what your rate, what the, what the power is costing.
Which this does. So, I think what you're arguing, can I play back, that maybe we.
You tweak, you.
We get rid of, either we tweak, or we get rid of the A two rate.
You need one, one time of use rate, and I'll, you're gonna change it, make me, you should make me pay more, not less, by moving it to eight P M, because that seventy-eight P M, am I wrong, is still the, kind of the peak.
Four, yeah, so four to eight, four to eight.
Four to eight is, but right now, the.
It's, it's, it's twelve to seven is the current, the.
Your two rate is twelve to seven.
So, you, you dropped, you dropped me from peak to off-peak in seven P M, but you're still in your peak. So, that needs to change.
Agreed.
To the benefit of our M L D and the break payer.
Agreed.
People like.
That's A two.
Yep, and people like me will get hit by that, which is appropriate.
Yep.
But just giving us an overnight rate that's very cheap, I'm just gonna switch to that and save you even more money. It's not gonna make me buy an electric car, I already have an electric car.
I know, but you, oh, I hear you.
I don't know why you want two time of use.
Well, that, that, the idea, but that's why I was saying that.
Yes.
If I go to that cheap rate, it shuts off, right? And if you think you're gonna get, you run your house on everything at.
Between four and eight. So, my, my primary load is between four and eight, so you can move your whole house. So, to your point, if you wanna move your whole house to this rate, you will, you will be paying more. And it will, and it will do exactly what you said, it'll correspond to our M L D cost. So, I think what you're really, so what I'm taking away is.
Go back and look to have one time of use residential.
One time of use residential. Ultimately, ultimately, we'll only have one rate.
Yes.
But, but it, for this intermediate step, maybe what we do is, we take the A two rate, which is in existence today.
Right.
We make these kind of modifications, we'll call it A three or E three, whatever, we'll figure out what is a good name for it. Um, and maybe we'll, we'll, we'll adjust this, we'll move the middle of the night a little bit higher, and maybe make the afternoon not quite expensive, because this, this afternoon rate of seventy-five cents a kilowatt hour? Yes? We're making.
That's a.
That's a, that's a margin maker for our M L D right now.
So, I mean, if you have two time of use residential rates, people are gonna cherry pick, based on their particular situation, which one to use. And the net-net is.
They're supposed to run the analysis, like, for the hundred, you're right.
There are, there are people like us out there.
Yeah.
And, and.
Okay, so here's, here's what I think, I mean, here's my takeaway for the recommendation. So, because we're gonna present this to you next, but go back and look at, uh, maybe taking the A two rate, and re-crafting that with some of the best, with some of the features of this rate. But, but whatever we call it, don't create a third, create only two.
I would say, yeah, simplify your rates, not make it more complicated with a new custom one that forty-five time of use. Or, what is it, four hundred use the A two rate, five hundred, three hundred?
Yeah, it's not.
And it's like, and so the new people coming in will take the overnight one, and they'll look at which one is slightly.
I mean, we'll just lose revenue, we don't be confusing. I'm gonna lose revenue, but I hear you. So, I, so, so I'm with you, so the takeaway?
Well, yeah, it'd be a more. Well, and most of the, the new EVs are incremental load, so that is incremental revenue, I guess.
For sure, no matter what, we're selling more, uh, electricity.
Yeah.
That's true, let's relax. We do, but we wanna, when we, to your point, we wanna push them to off-peak.
Yes.
I just feel like there should be one time of use rate, and it should be gradually imposed across more of the.
So, I think that's good, I think that's good feedback, just, just do one residential time of use? And we'll have, and we'll have the A rate for a while until, until twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe, when we can roll a whole thing out. But this will be a good incremental step.
So, you still wanna create the second rate, and then, then merge them later?
Well, I wanna have at least one time of use rate, and so, so let me play back the takeaway. I think, I, the, what I, what we'll do is, we'll take the A two rate, which is currently in existence, and we will, we will take some of the structure of this EV one rate, combine it, or, you know, merge it into the A two rate, and create a new A two rate. Now, we might call it something other than A two, but there'll only be one residential time of use rate, not two, which is what, if we have A two and EV one, we'd have two. And I think what you're saying, which I think is great input, create one.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think that's what, maybe disagree, why, why is that not a good idea?
Well, shoot, well, okay, but, oh, let me, yeah, we'll have to fine-tune the numbers even more, but yeah.
You haven't hit your, I don't care curve yet.
Right.
You keep, you have, you have your, your people who have the car that don't care, and you're watching your bill as the level of vehicle uses grow, you're going to hit your, I don't care, plug it in, and, and, because I need it, right? And that's.
Well, there'll always be those guys, though.
No, absolutely right, you know, what percentage is it, you know?
No, but I think, but, but, so, but I think you, you know, what we're trying to do, what we've discussed in the past is, we want the customers to, to want them to be, their behavior to more directly reflect the cost, um, the, the cost that it is to serve.
Absolutely.
Right, so that, and that's all drive time of use, I'm, I think we're all, all the same things there. There's another piece, which there is steady pressure, you know, now, you know, for the past two years, that the cost of energy is increasing, and there's also with the electrification EVs, there's a steady increase in terms of the amount of, of kilowatt hours that are being consumed.
Correct.
And we wanna do, you know, one of the things that, that Bill brings is, you know, other creative ideas in terms of more efficiency, right? So, you wanna keep, you wanna keep the efficiency in the play with the electrification, right? So, other ways to reduce the incremental load, but the incremental load is still going up, right? That's still happening. So, as those numbers get bigger, you know, what is now a hundred and thirty-eight, a hundred and forty-dollar bill? You know, for some people, they care a lot about it, and I feel like, hey, whatever, it's auto-pay, I don't care. But when that bill becomes a four-hundred-dollar bill, right? And again, we're gonna learn and can to keep the, you know, our, our collective rates low, but if we've got load increasing, and we've got rates increasing, it's not, it, 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 it's, you know, I don't know how quick it's gonna get to it, but there's gonna be some threshold where they are gonna care. And right, back to your point, which is, if you're trying to drive us, hey, make the customers aware of what the cost is, so that they do behave differently, right? And so, I, I think we're trying to get to the same place, but I think your idea of simplicity is good, so we'll, we'll fine-tune this one. Makes sense? Okay. Okay, um, last one, battery storage. So, just a quick update on battery storage. Sorry. Oh, sorry, that didn't click. She's so good. So good.
I didn't hear. I nailed it.
I'll be there in twenty-five seconds. So, um, as we've talked about before, you know, battery storage, it's, it's not a generator, right? It's not the end-all, be-all for everything, but it's an important part of our portfolio in terms of how we manage, um, power supply in particular, but also how we manage load and distribution network. And so, that, that first five megawatts, that station three, um, that is a system that's been in place, um, for three years now, or almost three years now, um, it's the one that was part of the ACES grant. So, it is, um, we, it is structured under, uh, uh, Energy Service Agreement with NEXTAR. Um, part of the Energy Service Agreement had a guarantee of at least five megawatts of output, so they had to do augmentation, which means they've had to replace battery packs or modules, uh, actually could be the technical term, um, to keep it at, so that is nearly complete, it's all done, but they're doing some final connections, testing, et cetera. Um, but it's basically running at five megawatts. Um, for those of you that signed off occasionally on power supply, um, you might have noticed that every, well, I guess last fall, there are a couple of ones where there was a penalty, where, where we got savings from. We ended up paying less with our monthly fee, because they weren't quite at the five-megawatt level. So, they're back at the five-megawatt, they're about to be back to the five-megawatt level. And that system's going well, that's an existing system, that's the first one. The next one down, the ten-megawatt system with the Ford site, that's the one with, we discussed and approved last year. Um, we continue to move forward on that particular project. Um, it's likely to be commissioned, if not at the end of the year, probably the first quarter, uh, the first quarter of twenty-twenty-four, which is good. Um, and then, um, as we had mentioned before, we had sent out, and we've received back R F P, um, for a series of other battery storage systems. They're listed there, Station Three Industrial Way, Station Six, and Maple Meadows. Um, obviously, Maple Meadows is still a working process, but the other, Station Three Industrial Way and Station Six are all pieces of property that we have right now. Um, so, we're in the process of analyzing those, as I mentioned before. Bill just finished last year a similar project, um, so he'll be helping us to do the final analysis and make good recommendations on that. The last Maple Meadow one is a little bit different, it says grid rather than distribution. We actually made a request, um, we have some bids on that one, but that would be a grid connection as opposed to a distribution connection. Um, so, it would be a very different business model, so we're evaluating that one as well. Um, from a customer, from an R M L D customer perspective, that is just to create some economics, um, given our unique location in terms of our tie points with National Grid and ever-source transmission systems, um, to leverage our geographic, uh, uh, unique position, um, to create some economic savings for our customers by playing on the wholesale side. So, more work to be done there, but just to let you guys know that that's in process, the other ones, um, we're digging deep into, and in the next couple of months, we'll report back to those that we wanna actually get permission to enter into, uh, a Energy Services Agreement. So, again, a lot of progress here. Um, the last one at the very bottom, um, we've got, we've, we've got actually very active discussions right now with, um, some long duration systems, different chemistries, not lithium ion, the ones above are, the ones above that we're having are all, um, peaker systems, the cheaper system. This last one, that last bullet there, um, based on some introductions that, uh, our cap representative had introduced us to, and also at the N E P A Annual Meeting, there was a company that was focusing on storage. So, we've got dialogues under N D A going on with both of them for long-term storage, and trying to figure out how that plays into the resiliency, reliability play more than the peak shaving play. So, again, we're really trying to, you know, how do you think about storage? Not only from managing the economics, but from a residency play. So, just, there's more details on that, but just to let you guys know, and so the public knows, we're very active in terms of working at storage, for both time shifting and peak shaving. Preston's thoughts, Preston's.
I had. Go ahead with that. Good, good, okay. So, what, what's like, is it, what's a little indicative example of the costs associated with installing one of those, and then the ongoing O and M costs over time? It's millions of dollars, right?
Yeah.
And well worth it. So, the question I have is, that's divisioning millions of dollars, what if those millions or half of that was invested in really getting aggressive with demand-side management at these same industrial companies that you are now gonna tweak this rate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But really getting in there with heavy financial incentives for them to really, really reshape what they're doing, and then you don't have to build it, or, or you have to build less stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, through behavior and, and policies and costs and investments, demand-side management. Because to your point, I mean, it seems like not a whole lot, yes, some things have been done with the industrial customers, but what I was hearing earlier is not, not a whole heck of a lot.
We're, we're gonna ramp that back up again.
I mean, and there's so much opportunity there, probably.
Yeah.
If it was worth their while.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'd like to, here at some point, of what, what could that look like? As we consider, as we, you know, consider, okay, let's spend twenty million on a ten-megawatt battery with, considering.
Yeah.
OpEx and CapEx.
Yeah, I, so two things, I think, so I think the reminder or the, or the prompt, you know, look at the efficiency programs, um, is good relative to the industrials, um, because we actually are trying to find new programs, right? So, the biggest thing was the lighting, and that's all done. So, what's, what's the next thing behind lighting, right? And there's not as many obvious things, but that's not to say that they're not there. The biggest issue is how do you help them change their, their use behaviors?
Right.
You know, I mean, this, you know, on a regular basis, how do you reduce the load? But now, how do you reduce it at our peaks, going back to the peak? So, you know, I think that's a good prompt, um, and again, you know, Bill's gonna bring some additional expertise with his work at EverSource as well, and then, but in terms of what other programs can we put in place? So, I think that's good. But I just wish for clarity, on these battery storage systems, all of these are done under an Energy Service Agreement, so we are not actually.
Fair.
Yeah, our, our intention is not, so, ultimately, it gets paid for by shared savings, but we're trying to, we, with the battery storage systems, unlike what we're gonna, what we're starting to do with solar or wind generation, where we're actually going to invest and get grant dollars for it, this is a different structure. So, I don't wanna not do this. So I don't want to not do this.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that you're not, yeah. But I think this is the range of options.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And, and, you know, also the other thing to keep in mind is, I mean, these things, there's an efficiency loss of what goes in.
Yep.
You don't get the same amount, you get, what are you doing with 30%?
No, well, like 50%.
Yes, so if you charge the battery, you only get 85% back out of it.
It depends on the chemistry. Some of these long-duration ones, their on-preference efficiency is much lower.
Yeah.
Lithium-ion, their on-preference efficiency is better. Capacity does is very high.
But when, but, but if you have demand side, it's always 100%.
Yeah. The main problem with the demand side is that, you know, well, it's within the customer's control.
I know.
It's not in.
I understand, but with the right dollars.
Well, I, I think that goes back to what the right sentence, and I think the coincidence of the peak is eight peaks of it, but I think what you're saying is look deeper. Yeah, and that's our takeaway, right? Yeah, that's right. Let's go through that.
Sorry, so a couple of points. One is on-demand side, like, you know, companies like Enonoc have been doing it for years, right?
Well, that, go ahead.
Right, I mean, that's demand, right?
Yeah, that's demand response.
That's demand response.
They don't do that anymore, but keep going.
But so, so, but there's a lot of industrial demand response that's being done, right? So, so, and so I, I don't know how, how that's different, because I know people like Stop and Shop and all, I guess they, they are enrolled in those kind of programs. And Ken Welter was, used to work with Stop and Shop, so I think he would know from a, from a customer perspective as to what incentives work for them, so that would be a good way to get Dave's point.
I think, I think the concept's good, Bob's, uh, Bob's got a temporary analogy. We'll let you.
And then, and then.
We want to try it. Now, we're going to have each other.
My second comment was about the longer duration system.
Yeah.
It can provide resilience.
Yes.
But if you have the play of selling back on the grid, so you can be resilient and be making money every day. So, so, because typically a long duration, if it's just, if it's a pure insurance program, it has a high cost.
Correct.
But it's treated as an insurance asset. But if you have the capability and the systems worked out to be a player in the market, then you can have much better economics.
Yeah, this, and this is exactly, is that what we're trying, that's why we're having the discussions with two of those guys. I mean, very detailed discussions where, um, right now, probably not for us to buy, but they're looking for private locations where they can, they can work this stuff out. And so we're trying to, you know, so on these longer-term places, the resiliency is the piece, but we're looking for that economic piece, and all of us are, and them too. So we're, we're looking to work with them together to figure it out, um, and to try it. And the good news is, we are a great size for them, we're big enough, and we have the connection points, yet we're nimble enough to be, to be responsive. So that's why they're going to have to kind of work with us. But nobody has, because the, the certainly, um, the efficiency cycle of those is so low, it creates a very, you know, how do they make the economics work?
There's no, there's no backbeat.
There's blow, there's a bunch, you know, there's a bunch of different technologies. And so we've got two loads that we're trying to, not trying to, we're hoping to, and that's not going to be till the end of 2024, when, when we're beginning to have hardware. Here, from their perspective, not us, like, we take it in the end of, you know, fourth quarter of this year, but they won't be ready for us until the end of 2024 at the earliest. But exactly the right thing, that's why we're trying to get engaged with them to, to learn together, because there's an economic game, there's an economic play here, because we can play on both the distribution side and the transmission side, given the fact that we have two tie points and soon to be three, and Maple, if we do Maple, it'll be four tie points. Whole new game. Uh, reality check.
Well, I guess, you know, our job's to power the business, how to run the business, right? We supply power to the businesses.
Yeah.
And let them run. And I, I know, Dave, you, you want to get in and tell them.
We give them money.
Well, well, I just, you know, you don't go in there, you don't go in there and tell them how to run, run their business. You, you go in there and say, okay, they, if they choose to use more energy, because they're growing, they're going to use more energy, right? That, that, that simple factor. So let, I think the, the focus is work on, work on that side, not, not this side. And then I'm not knocking what you're saying, right? Because there's a good, there's a good point.
Yeah.
When they realize money, how I can affect my own demand curve, great, how can I do it? But let's, let's, just stay behind the wall, right? Stay behind the transformer and, and, and do I, do I work, but, um, uh, uh, that's all, I just don't want to see, if, if they're interested, great, you can work with them.
Well, it's easy for them to participate if they can.
Is this not clear how much of that, I mean, how much of that interaction is happening?
Oh, I, I, I think everybody, you, you think everybody in the planet's changed over to an LED light.
Sure, sure.
Right, and everybody's, it means turn it over.
Yeah, anything like that, it just.
The simple stuff is done, right? That, that, I think that the easy, the easy stuff's now is hard.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, now, now it's hard. Now you're going into life, at something that's efficient. Right now, you're in a different wallet, you know, it's a, and, and then, you know, what's my payback on a, on a, a higher energy efficient system, you know, going in, you know, is, we talked about, is it gas, is it electric?
Yeah. No, we do have, so we have done just not as many of them as promotion, but we have on our, um, on the commercial side, we have custom energy program where if they choose a more efficient system, we actually, we, we'll write them a check that we run for the calculations, but we actually do that. But we need to figure out more opportunities, because they're, you know, that's the bottom point, there's not as many, most of them, they've done VFT drives, they've done the hyper, you know, the high-efficiency compressors, so you know, what's next? And the next thing, I think, goes back to where your, your intuition says, is how do you change behaviors, right? Right? And so this, this coincidence might be a piece, but it, I think you're, you're prompting us to, hey, think deeper in terms of what else you can do that would be maybe more behavioral, how, how they do it. Bob's point is, you know, we're not, we're not running their place, no, but if we create the incentives for them to take action, then that's a win. Okay, so that's good, anyway, so that's, so that's really helpful, I think, from an irony perspective, feedback. Any other comments?
I have a related question or comment.
Yeah.
Not enough time for Bob to, but. So during, how much?
The reason why we said for a few minutes.
How much solar, installed solar capacity is in a?
About a megawatt.
Okay. So at noon on a sunny day, solar panels in our multi-territory is cranking on nine megawatts.
Yeah, nine, yeah, nine.
And during the peaks at three or four on a sunny day, it's probably half that, right? Four?
Uh, well, the summertime, so the peak of the summertime? Yeah, we're probably six, so we actually, so we have the, yes.
So.
It's probably two-thirds.
So here's what I'm, here's what I'm driving at, so during.
There's nothing in the winter time.
During those times, right, exactly, seven by three, um, you're, you're paying people five cents a kilowatt hour for excess solar that they're generating, not using. If on those peak, monthly peaks or annual peaks, you were to say, I'm going to give you 50 cents a kilowatt hour, you know, meanwhile, you're paying $3 a kilo, whatever you're paying, you're paying 10x that amount, because it's the peak, or whatever it is.
You're like, keep going, keep, keep.
Because the idea is that you, you say for those, those days, those, those people who are generators are incented to let their system flow back onto the grid for higher than the five cent kilowatt hour. Because you have a latent four, five megawatt sitting on people's roofs, and they're not thinking about, well, what if I dialed my usage back at my house a little more, I'd get paid more, because it's the.
I get, that's a good point, right? So, so reduce load, so at the end of the day, net, either net load on the house will be lower, and whether it feeds back or not.
Well, it sent me as a solar owner to get, I get more money if on a peak day that you've declared, I'm getting 30 cents a kilowatt hour instead of five cents for those six days that you're here, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
And then.
It's a time, it's a, it's back to the time of use.
And then now you have generation flowing out there that's now not really being used that way.
I'm going to say it back differently, which is, because the generation's there no matter what you do for their rates. But what we're really, we're trying to use the solar piece, which is install capacity right now, to encourage, because there's more value there, to reduce your load at home, net, net, we get to the same result, but we're really, the behavior, we're really changed, because they are going to change what they do on the solar system, they're going to change, how much energy am I using in my home?
Correct.
In peak hours.
They're going to give you more of their electricity, because they're getting paid more.
They're going to use less, but they're not on the same page.
Which is, is, is essentially the same, if everybody did it and, and it's generating five megawatts on that day, then you just created a five-megawatt generator, if everybody was to, I'm just saying, the theoretical maximum, it might be half that.
Yeah, so, so seven out of that nine, or seven point five out of that nine is the commercial systems and the residential's is one half, but just, but the point's still there.
They're getting installed all over the place.
Yeah.
You see them all over the place going up, so it's going to be 10, 11, 12 megawatts over the next few years.
Yeah, but I, I think the, the idea is, the point's there. And then the other things we talked about before is on the commercial industrials and the utility systems, unlike what we've done in the past or somebody else's, on the, those we actually do want to own, because those are valuable, right? I mean, the net, net, it's a win, so, um, yeah, so the time of, I would call it solar time of use, but.
Pay, pay, pay them more when it's peak day to, to rush the concept, yeah.
Yeah. But also what happens, right, in, in reality in the market, when, when those solar panels are generating their peak during the day, they're driving down the, the market rates.
True.
And that, if you've got nine megawatts of battery, you can store that, that negative L E energy, the grid will pay you to store it, and then you can just charge it during the peak. So that's another use of the batteries, why they're, they're going to add to this.
This is another resource out there, that there's not an incentive now to let that resource feed into the grid, there isn't one.
Right.
There could be one.
Yeah.
Wouldn't take much for me to shut more stuff off.
You're a good, you're a good.
If you give me 10 cents a kilowatt hour.
He's going to shut off his main.
I'm not even kidding, and I'm going to invite Bob over.
I, you'll, you'll have a charcoal grill for that, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Okay, if we may, anything else? That's very helpful, thank you. You're getting a sense now that power supply and incentive, it's a, it's a, it's an engaged topic at our, which is good.
Yeah.
Part of the, okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sarah Harrington.
Yes, thank you. I'm Sarah Harrington, I'm the new Director of HR. Um, I've been here since the end of December, so I'm very new, not as new as Bill, but still new, um, six weeks, yeah. So, oh, I've been in HR for many years, I teach a class at Middlesex Community College, um, to keep my skills sharp, my class starts next Tuesday, if anyone's taking an HR class, so I don't know. Um, but I'm here to talk about, um, on the agenda that I have to talk about tonight is our human capital metrics, sort of looking at our workforce, where we are today, where do we want to go? Um, looking at the recruiting, recruiting is my number one sort of thing, my chart right now that I'm doing, I focused on that. So we right now have 76 employees, hoping to be at 100 by the end of 2023. We have started four people in the last, um, week and a half, so we're at 80, so we have 20 to go in the next 11 months. Um, we are crazy with interviews, so hopefully we'll get there. Um, I also want to talk about our leadership and supervisor development. We have plans to train our supervisors, our frontline supervisors and our employees to give them the tools and the skills that they can do their job better, train other people to become future supervisors and leaders, and, um, be better equipped to, to help RMLD. And then I'll talk about streamlining processes as well, what is in store, hopefully for 2023, um, talk briefly about an HRIS system and what that means to us, if we ever get it, as Greg is laughing, um, but that's what I would like to talk about with you all today. So starting off with our HCM metrics, our human capital metrics, looking at our workforce generation right now, our number one generation is Generation X, followed by our millennials and then our baby boomers, and then Gen Z, we have six Gen Z employees. So it's important to know what they want, why are they staying at RMLD, sort of what is their employee value composition, why do they come to work here, and why do they stay? We have to focus on our baby boomers, as they will be the ones that are phasing out of the, the workforce, um, the next five, 10, 15 years, and they sort of have what I call tribal knowledge, and we need to make sure that they pass it on to other people in the workforce, so that they're training the, the Gen X and the millennials and, and the, the, the Gen Z, so making sure we're passing that on to them. Um, so I thought it was just interesting that our top three were, um, XY and, and boomers, so it, it is interesting. Well, see, the alpha generation next, I don't think they're going to be working any something soon, um, but they will be coming up next, and who knows what, uh, we have in store with them. But just to give you a snapshot, this is our workforce by generation. For our departure through the last two years, in 2021, we had 10 people leave, um, one person left within what we call a, a new employee, so within their first 12 months, um, and that was a line worker. So, um, the, the majority of our, our terminations over the last two years have been in the line department. And then in 2022, we doubled in turnover, so we went from 10, um, to almost, almost double to, to 19, and we had two people leave within 2022 within their first 12 months. So again, that was part of the line department. So hoping that retention, recruiting and retention are, are biggest, what, what I'm focusing on, and we have to look at who is leaving voluntarily, who is going to retire. So we have the retirement age up there as, um, it's 60, so in 2023, you can have 20 people leave, um, 2024, we can have 23, no one leaves in 23, and then 25, it goes up to 24 employees. If you bump off that retirement age just five years, it drops drastically. 2023 goes to five, and 24 and 25 go to 10. So that is what we're planning on, those people, we need to get their knowledge, and how is this such a planning if they're in a key role, a position within RMLD to make sure that the transition is smooth, and when they do decide to leave, we have someone that can come in and step into their place when we don't, don't exist. As for our tenure, this is very interesting, um, 37% of our employees are within their first five years, and 30% of 30 employees, excuse me, are in their first 12 months, which I think is amazing. Um, so we really need to focus on the retention of retaining these employees, um, as well as our other employees. So if you look at the six to 10 years, we have 13 employees, um, 11 to 20 is 13, and then it trickles down. So we have to look at what are engagements or what are drivers of retention, right? The number one reason why people leave is they quit, they quit their boss, they don't quit the job. Um, it's not money, it, it's really your relationship with your manager, so we want to build those strong relationships with the employees and their managers. People like work-life balance, they want to feel that, um, they're not burning up, because burnout is real, it truly happens. If someone is burning the candle at both ends, they're trying to do too much, they'll burn up, and they won't be productive, they'll be very unhappy. Uh, now, the third driver is recognition, telling them that they're doing a good job, even if it's just a great job, it doesn't have to be money or that driven, it's just, hey, great job doing it, Phil, you know, thanks for, for your hard work.
I mean, I remember plus.
You're.
You're one of the point guys.
I forgot the one at the.
Other current training and development, um, people want to learn new things, they want to be cross-trained, they want to grow within an organization. When we bring people in, we talk about their growth plans with RMLD. You start in the control room, one day you could be the lead line worker, you could be a troublemaker, you could be whatever you want to be. So we help them, we develop these, these development plans for these employees to help them move along, which we'll talk a little bit more about. But that's our tenure, and I, I just thought it was fascinating that 30 people, um, are within their first 12 months, like, that is amazing. Um, recruiting, again, that, this is my number one focus, um, it is hot, hot, hot. Um, we brought on four people since January 1st, which is amazing. Um, so 20, in 22, we hired 26 people, and 23, we'll probably hire at least 25 people to get us to that 100, 100 mark, and that doesn't include any churn that we see of people leaving or moving to other departments, internal transfers and things like that. Uh, so we currently have 10 open positions that we are looking on, and we're also looking to hire summer interns, and we are looking at creative ways to get those interns, um, and creative ways to recruit. So in the past, we really just did RMLD website, and that was it. And we just waited for LinkedIn and Monster to pick up our postings, and it was very passive. Since I've come on, we have gone on to ZipRecruiter, which really, I am so surprised that it's been so fruitful, we're getting so many resumes, I'm like, great, 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 and he's like, keep them coming, I'm like, they're coming. So ZipRecruiter has been great for us. High quality, like for, for different, not just one job, for many jobs, for IRG, for operational assistance, for control room, um, analyst, engineer, things like that. We're also on LinkedIn, so we're all linked on LinkedIn, so when one person posts, like, I saw a raise last night, and I shared his post, and he's like, hey, you're hiring, we He's like, hey, you're hiring, we have an analyst, I'm like, yep. So we share it, we create cards that we can post on and put it up there. So we all have that sort of the same message that we're hiring, this is what we look like. So we're uniformed in LinkedIn, we're trying, looking to do it with other social media, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, or it's just that common message. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We've been Chamber of Commerce, we post with them. I change the jotza every month so they don't get stale. So sort of spice it up and people can see what else we're hiring for. Today, we have people at Marymount College, tomorrow, Hameen's going to WPI to get our full-time positions and our interns as well. We want to get three to four, maybe even five interns for the summer to work in different divisions. And then we'll be at U S Lowell in March. So again, we'll get interns and engineers there too. Internal referrals have been great. We've hired two so far from people within RMLD, so that is great, that speaks volumes. If someone's like, hey, come work where I work, it's a great place, that's huge, that is really good. Recruiters, I've been hesitant to use that because I don't want to spend so much money. I want to see what I can do first and what we can do as a team in RMLD. Talking about interviews, we have thirteen scheduled for next week. So it is, it's, we're like moving and growing, so it's a good thing. Leadership and supervisor development, so our employees have something called a career development plan. But I want to add on to that and give them trainings for soft skills like time management, how to handle conflict resolution, how to run a meeting effectively, but also the tougher ones of compliance, like preventing sexual harassment and discrimination in the workplace, workplace bullying, violence in the workplace, getting our managers and frontline supervisors equipped. If something happens, they don't panic and they know what to do. So that is something that we're baking into their CDPs. Maya is also, they do our wellness, they do our workers' comp. And we are looking to partner possibly with the town to get those free trainings as well. And if we do use Maya, I believe we get a discount or some type of credit towards our annual premium, so we'll do that as well. And then a third party, I know that the engineering department and IRD, they have some outside vendors that you go to, that's again baked into the CDPs for their line man, their engineers and so forth. But we're looking at other avenues to get our trainings out to our leadership and to our first-line supervisors and employees. So they have the skills. And then lastly, to streamline the process, an HRIS system is something I am dying to get. That's a human resource information system where information is at your fingertips. So you can pull a dashboard up, what is my turnover like, who's my head catch? You can drill down, where is our highest turnover? Is it voluntary, involuntary, who's the manager? What's going on, what's the reason, things like that? Who's on benefits, what's the tenure of our, of our employees? What's our overtime? And it can be for a defined time, it can be for a month, a quarter, a week. We can pull that all and then we can see if there's any trends that we need to maybe do some trainings with managers to maybe how to control overtime or how to effectively hire someone if we're seeing people leave within the first year. Are they given a realistic job preview and did that manager do a good job hiring people and so forth? So this is something that is coming, I am told. I am super excited for it because we'll make it easier, we'll have dashboards that we can look at finances or just HR. You know, I'm sure that Greg will want different dashboards and I want, and Bill will want different ones. So it's just easy to manage our business and it tells a story of where we are and where we're going in and how we're going to get there. That's it, thank you. Great.
Questions?
So we were approximately eighty employees, right, and a hundred, that's where you'd see most of that. Is it live, is it metering, is it engineering, is it?
It's a lot of the, it's spread around, it's analysts, it's engineering, it's operational assistance, engineers for persistence for those divisions. We're looking for another engineering and operational, I call it OA, operational assistant to help because it's such a big department that they need more support. Another control room, substation techs, it's really all over the place, it's not just one area, it's spread out through RMLD. There's two, yeah, substation techs we're looking for and another control room operator, just distribution engineer.
We've got most of the lines.
Yeah.
The lines behind you are also. That was twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Six or seven, two operational assistants.
Yeah, you have, yeah, you probably have six or seven. Great, thanks.
Julie?
Tough act to follow.
So this is our communications update. The first item is our customer satisfaction survey. So we began fielding responses in early, actually at the end of January. And we're collecting responses through February twentieth. And we have hit our residential goals and we're very close to our commercial goals. And we will be providing a report on March tenth. So hopefully next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll be able to share our findings, which we're very excited about. The next item is a minor refresh of our website. So we realized that our website wasn't very mobile friendly because we had a lot of buttons that made it, you know, really long to scroll. So we had a conversation with our web development team and there are a lot of updates that we want to do, but we have to wait until the spring to implement those because they're doing some updates on our, whatever our web platform is. So in the meantime, we're developing an architecture to the site and, you know, having certain things be front and center and looking at the analytics of the website. So one example is that we're looking at what people are searching for in our, with our search bar. So that shows that if you have to use the search bar, that's something that's hard to navigate on the site and a lot of people are searching for solar. So that's one example of something that we're going to put front and center on our website. I've been looking at competitor websites and I've seen that a lot of them have a button that says ways to save, which I think is great and that'll include rebates and efficiency tips. So I'm just doing research on what I think will be helpful to our site and user-friendly. So that'll be coming in the coming months. But in the meantime, we just did a minor refresh that I think is good for the interim and it makes our website display a lot better on mobile devices. So next, social media, we're still seeing steady organic growth and our posts can reach up to two thousand nine hundred people. And Facebook has become a top search, I'm sorry, a top source for web referrals to our site. One avenue that, or one thing that I've been doing is posting our open job positions and those tend to be our highest engaged posts. So it shows that people are looking at our open positions and want to work at RMLD. So it's been nice to see that. Next, we had a home energy audit webinar in January and we had two hundred and forty registrants and eighty-five live attendees. And after that, we saw a spike in audit registrations, which is a great thing, but there's also a very long waitlist for the audits, well, not long, but a few monthly times. So the N E is working on those and I think they're working on getting an additional auditor, but it just shows that people want to improve the efficiency of their home, especially given, you know, prices being higher and we're setting people up to do that, which is great. Next, our bill increase, which we announced at the end of last meeting. So what I wanted was to be proactive instead of reactive because as you know, these meetings are televised, so I didn't want, you know, media picking up on the meetings and posting things without our messages being incorporated. So shortly after our meeting ended, I updated our website, I sent communications out to the local media and everything, all of our key messages were picked up. So if you look at the coverage across our local media, it has our key messages in there about how we're waiting till March to reduce the burden and the reason for the increases and also the comparison to IOUs. And lastly, other highlights, so during the recent cold snap, our space heater safety tips were posted on the Reading Patch in advance of the cold snap, just to remind people about the hazards of space heaters. And our elementary school art contest, I sent everyone an email, that's going to be taking place in March. The submissions were wonderful, we're excited about that. And I notified the winners this week and I'm planning the award ceremony. And another thing is the high school art contest, that is on our website as well as of today. So that will be in the spring.
It's great, thank you. I know the tradition of the art contest is popular and I love the submissions so much. I want it to continue and grow and, you know, carry on the stamp line. Orfing it into the more or something.
Right, I was like, third grade, tenth grade.
Fourth grade and high school, fourth and fifth, okay. But I've just always had such a problem with the subjective nature of art and children.
Of course, yes.
As a contest, I just, on one hand, we're saying, do this, we love what you do. On the other side, but we're only going to pick one and I just, so that could kill.
Yep.
So this is kind of core, it's art.
So to your point, so we have three winners for each school. And, but I guess struck a chord with me was that at one school, there were two twins, like one is in first place and one is in third. And I talked to a teacher and I said, maybe next year, like, what do you think if we don't rank and just have three winners? It's too late this year, but I, yeah, the whole, the whole ranking. That's true, right, and have like.
Just practice it, they don't have to get anything.
Right, and have, no, I love that idea and have like a celebration of, and like a gallery instead of. You know, kids don't really care about twenty-five, they're like, they're getting part of the building.
If we turn out one kid from pursuing art anymore or always feeling like, I'm not as good as I thought I was, as young as nine years old, then we have failed terribly.
So, yeah. And it was something like I was in like tunnel vision and, you know, just wanted to follow the procedure that we've been doing, but I did take a step back and think that, yeah, it did bother me writing them, especially fourth graders. I have a second grader and, you know, his mom is.
My seventh grader still remembers the fourth grader. She lost to, yeah, and she's, she knows she thought it was art, but it was just another nail in the coffin. And, but I, I'm not going to use her as a, like.
No, and I agree, I think next year, I love that idea to just. Yep, have submissions and then have a gallery and we can even, you know, work with the schools and have, it doesn't even have to be here, like the school, they can be on display at the schools, they can be on display at the library.
I think display is the prize.
Yes, I agreed to say, yeah.
On that, would you still select one or two prints to go into the report or you would stop?
So that's the high, the high school art. The high school art goes on.
Transition of the leadership TV era, we might, oh, yeah.
So that's the high school one, I feel like high, so the high school one isn't mandatory. So what I'm seeing, and we're just starting the high school one, the elementary school one is mandatory. It's all the art class, it's either through the art class or the science class and every fourth grader within our territory, territory has to participate. Whereas high school, it's, you know, the artistically inclined kids that want to participate. So I think that, and the high schoolers are probably a little more. We pick a few overall winners. Sorry. Sorry.
Historically, I wasn't here, you weren't here, how would that manage that it be mandatory though? These are classes first.
Because it's, we're, well, not mandatory, so we give the schools a chance to opt-in. So it's not for the schools that choose to participate, which is every school in our territory. In the past, there were some that didn't, but this year, all elementary schools participated and it became part of the curriculum. So, because they're learning about electricity in fourth grade and it's tied to some kind of standard. So I think the teachers enjoy, you know, it's something, like one less thing for them to plan. But I do really think for next year. Yes, and it is, and seeing the submissions are wonderful.
I have a value card to the number one.
Great, and I. Right, oh, forks in the toaster, I couldn't even count how many forks that the teachers really drilled that point. Like, don't stick a fork in a toaster, we have about twenty of those submissions.
Good lesson.
It is a good lesson, it is. But, yes, I am all for revamping it next year and not having, yes. And that, that's my, I, it bothered, it did bother me, I'm not, yeah. RMLD, like wall, you know, branded materials.
I never really thought about this aspect before. Say, I agree, I feel a little queasy about what are we doing sitting around making eighty percent of the kids feel like they didn't do a good job, why are we doing that?
And they're so proud of their work.
Takes some effort right now.
Yeah, yeah, and then I, yeah, and some of them, like, I think parents helped with some of them. There was, there was a very, yeah, I don't want to, oh. A very realistic depiction of something that I don't, I think it's beyond.
But anyway, thanks for continuing this tradition and I can't wait to see the submissions. Last year they were always, next year. Great. A lot of the kids didn't know that their work is on the plan.
Of course, yep. Yeah, and even maybe I could work with the library, maybe they can, you know, hit them after or some of them or, yeah, have more of a shelf life.
Thank you. I didn't mean to derail your presentation, but.
No, I very much appreciate that.
I'm forwarding your posts around Tuesday, six.
Everything's great, thank you.
So we done.
Just one last, two minutes, minute and a half.
GM report.
Great, so we did, a lot of things we normally put into that one, I just want to do two things. One, also, we'll talk about this, we've talked a lot as a group individually about the development of the site. So the Reading Town Manager and I and our respective teams decided in order to get this, to keep this ball moving forward as opposed to it just being a concept, we decided together that we would put a milestone, a stake in the ground, proverbial stake in the ground. We've actually, we've actually put a real stake in the ground. But the point being is, we, so you guys know we as RMLD need to do something physically with our, our two buildings. Not today, but particularly the operations center. And that there's been a lot of talk and discussion about what to do with the Astria campus. So we as, as RMLD are very supportive of doing something different because we need to, but we also think that there's a better way to optimize this space. We still need a place to have a home, obviously we're not saying we're walking away in any way, shape or form. And the town has a strong interest in doing something as well. So we, we basically, the whole point of this is just to say that what's the stake in the ground? The stake in the ground is those last two bullets there are basically, let's, let's try and start working now to get to twenty twenty-nine and twenty twenty-thirty where in twenty twenty-nine, RMLD moves into a new building, whatever that building looks like, again, we're not trying to architect it right now, but that's the move-in period, right, second quarter of twenty twenty-nine. And then we'd have to obviously move onto this building, so that would allow time for the first quarter of twenty thirty or whatever this building and whatever behind us becomes, that'll allow work between now and then. But we basically by twenty thirty, we have transformed this campus into something different. So a lot more work to be done. There's a lot of economics, there's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of pieces that have to go through here. But we said, what do we need to do this year and what do we need to get done? If we're going to do something, what is it going to be? I should say, what is it going to be, what's the deadline? So that's our milestone, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. Those other intermediate steps, there, there's, there's a hundred intermediate steps, but those were some of the big pieces. One thing that we did agree to do, you know, we've been talking for the past year and a half with, with the town in particular, to do something with station one. We keep looking at different ideas that work, but what we agreed to do at a minimum is to have some outdoor event this summer here at RMLD as just a starting point. So we, we're both committed to have some external event, we'll give more details, it'll probably be in the July, August timeframe. And that'll be a joint sponsored event between the Town of Reading and RMLD. So this is basically to say, hey, look, for, for the audience outside, and you guys know this already, but we want to, there's a lot of steps to go through, but we want to make a milestone target. And that's twenty-nine, twenty-thirty transition, which is seven years down the road. So time is going to go by fast, but we're going to get started now. Questions about that, there's a lot here, but just, there's a target.
Good to have a target.
You got to start somewhere.
A lot of moving parts, I mean, this. So, so if certain things happen, you have to be able, takes note that it's not these moves.
But again, I. Yeah, we're trying to.
Good to, good to put a stake.
We're just trying to put a stake in the ground. The other, the other element goes back to, okay, you know, all these neat things, how do you fund everything? And so I know that, I don't know, but our, I was here, you're there as well, that the director of finance, we have a quick update last time we were together about different grants. So just in terms of additional external funding, state level and federal funding. So we are seriously pursuing numerous grants. There's forty-three million dollars of grant submissions that were already put in place, step one. There's smart grid and grid modernization, there's grid resiliency, there's security grants. And then also, as we get a little further down the road, we anticipate grants for any solar projects such as MIBL MELLS, et cetera. And we also, on the industrial side, as we, as we kind of build out the IRD team or get it back up to, to partial strength, to start pursuing industrial solar projects where we actually only access because there's that investment tax credit that we now have access to. A lot of work to be done. An example, so four grants have been submitted already, January and earlier this week. The first one, it's been typically their two-step process. The smart grid, grid modernization, one that we submitted that Ben drove with support from Hameen and his team. There were three hundred and twenty-six submissions, a hundred and fifty-seven got made through the first, the first eight. We were one of those, a hundred and fifty-seven. You only had, there's a list of eight different things that you need to do before you do the next phase two grant submission. We only have one item checked that we need to work on. So anyway, our, our submissions were very favorably approved. There's work to be done, but the point being is that for both the audience here and for the people that see this, this YouTube video later on from RCTV, we are aggressively pursuing grant opportunities that will fund the growth that we need to put in place. Those are the two big items from the town manager's report.
My question is, and nowhere in here do I see the buildings behind us. Is that somewhere in here? Because that could be quite lucrative.
Two thirty-two, you mean that little diagram?
Yeah, the background.
Two thirty, two thirty-two.
Well, and plus the other ones that are in the back beyond that too.
Well, so, so with that diagram there, that little, so there's the two thirty-two, right? Well, so, so with that diagram there, um, that little, of course, so there's the two thirty-two, right behind it is the railroad track. So there's a, there's a little on the right-hand side, there's a little bit of clip, but that's a pretty, that has most of the campus. It has, except for just a little bit cut off of the right end.
Yeah, but you've got, you've got some other businesses that are over to the right in this picture, two thirty.
No, just, yeah, so you see my, my point here, there's only a few, so most of the businesses are, are in that area there, there's, there's probably one more little building there. So, so my taken, yeah, two thirty-two is part of the whole plan. Absolutely part of it.
Because I know there was always a suggestion of connecting it to the buildings and the businesses on the other side.
Of the railroad tracks.
No, the way, as you go, as you go down there, you have the business to the right.
Yeah.
Beyond that, you can't get to, if people, like, the area like.
There's an office, there's a medical office building, right?
Medical office, but it can also connect to the other side where Market Basket is, and those, and those spaces.
Correct.
That's always been discussed, I don't see that, where that would be in any of this.
This isn't meant to be that full plan, this is just to say, basically, so, um, the whole campus would include that, would be part of the work that we'd have to do in the next seven months in close cooperation with the town and whatever developer wants to come in and do it. All, all we're saying is opposed to us just talking, like, we, we as our M L D need to do some stuff with our facilities. And so now that we, so we want to be a catalyst to help move this whole ball forward. We're not, right now, we're not saying that we're the, that we're the site developer, we're trying to be supportive. That's all we're saying, so there's a whole bunch of stuff, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here. But what we're trying to do is say, look, we're going, we're going, we are going to work very closely with the town in Reading to try and make this happen, because they didn't try to make it happen, there's, there's a whole bunch of reasons why things haven't happened, but the, the, we're committed and the town's committed, so we're going to try and make something happen. That's, that's all this is trying to say.
Point you make, you say share Astrid campus concepts, I would hope those concepts were considered, all the properties that are back there.
Absolutely.
Not only two thirty-two, but all the ones to the right there too.
Well, yeah, to the right, yeah, yeah.
Right in that picture.
Yeah. Well, I think there'll be a phase.
Open up the whole area.
Yeah, again, we know we're the electric utility, um, so we're, we're supportive of it, we're, we're not the, uh, the site planning architect group. We want somebody else to take the lead, but we want, we want, we want to help drive it and help push it and, you know, I think we're, again, we're going to work hand in hand with the town and try and make it happen. But again, we, we realize that our charge is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy for our customers and, and, you know, we need a place to operate out of and there's interest in here, so we're trying to make something happen. That's all, it is not meant to be a comprehensive plan, there's, each one of these bullets, there's dozen items under each one of them.
Just trying to make the point that it should go beyond just what's in this picture.
Good. I think that's fair.
Oh, our next meeting is Wednesday, we're at the beach at seven thirty, in this room.
That's going to be my question, do you want to do this room again?
Sure.
I'll be surrendering the conference room to your, uh.
No, I'm not surrendering to anybody, we just have to get in, but, no.
Congrats on that.
No. Not yet.
But this room works great.
Thank you.
And the public is certainly welcoming you.
Seven thirty, is it?
Yep. They're all seven thirty, and they're booked all the way up to December, I'm not going to read them off, but. So any heads?
Thank you. Yep, the motion to adjourn, yeah. Board of commissioners adjourn regular session.
Second.
Mr. C N R?
Hello.